Good evening. We'll start the agenda meeting. Thank you all for being here. As always, we'll start the thing with the invocation by Pastor Perry Black, then we'll go into the pledge allegiance by Councilmember Baptist to lead us in that. Roll call approval of two sets of minutes and then we'll move into committee reports. So right now we'll move on down to committee reports and motions and we'll start with personnel and health.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have one ordinance. Ordinance number thirty of twenty twenty-five. And that's the ordinance talking about going to APERS for our city employees, for our non-uniform employees.
Can't hear him.
Can't hear him out there? Can you pull it up closer to you?
Yeah, it's on. The first, the only issue we have denying personnel health and safety is ordinance number thirty of twenty twenty-five, and that's an ordinance determining that City of Benton should become a participating public employer of the Arkansas Public Employees Retirement System and for other purposes. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, any questions? All right, we'll move on down to the Animal Service Committee.
Mayor, we've got resolution number forty-four of twenty twenty-five, resolution authorizing the mayor of City of Benton to apply for a grant on behalf of the Benton Animal Services and for other purposes.
Any questions about this? All right, move down to the Commissions Committee. All right, I'm gonna back up the A and P Commission Committee since I skipped it.
You didn't miss anything. We had nothing.
Well, okay, we'll move on down to Community Service.
Yes, sir. We have four ordinance, excuse me, four resolutions this evening. The first resolution, forty-five, a resolution to condemn the structure located at sixteen hundred Gum Street and for code enforcement to raise said property in accordance with Arkansas State law and city ordinance and for other purposes. Resolution forty-six is a resolution to condemn the structure located at twenty-three nineteen Kelso Circle and for code enforcement to raise said property in accordance with Arkansas State law and city ordinance and for other purposes. Resolution forty-seven is a resolution to condemn the structure located at twenty-five oh-two Gatton Road and for code enforcement to raise said property in accordance with Arkansas State law and city ordinance. And resolution forty-eight is a resolution to request the Celine County Tax Collector place a certified lien against real property located at one-twenty North Conrad Street as a result of incurred expenses by the City of Benton in accordance with state law and city ordinance and for other purposes.
All right, any questions from the council on any of these? All right, here none. We'll move on to Finance Committee.
Yes, sir. Tonight we'll have one ordinance and one resolution. First is ordinance number thirty-one of twenty twenty-five and it's ordinance levying a tax on all real and personal property in the City of Benton for the City General and for the Fireman's Pension and Relief Fund and for other purposes. And then resolution number forty-nine of twenty twenty-five is a resolution authorizing the mayor and City of Benton to utilize federal aid transportation alternative program funds and for other purposes. And that's all.
Thank you, Dan. Anyone have a question on any of these? All right, Parks Committee.
Thank you.
Thank you. P and Z Commission.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. We have one ordinance. It's the ordinance number thirty-two of twenty twenty-five. It's an ordinance rezoning parcel eight oh-five dash two oh-five two eight dash zero zero one in the City of Benton, Celine County, Arkansas from H.I. High Industrial to R-five multifamily district and for other purposes. And that's all I have, sir.
All right, anyone have a question on this? Move down to the P U C Commission.
Yes, Mayor, I have actually two ordinance. First one being ordinance thirty-three of twenty twenty-five and ordinance amending ordinance number forty of twenty twenty-three clarifying the assessment for stormwater fees and for other purposes. That was again just clarifying some of the wording on that on multi-ploper's buildings along the lines of that and making it clearer. Clearer. Next one is ordinance thirty-four of twenty twenty-five and ordinance waiving competitive bidding for Benton utilities to purchase a replacement valve for the installation of the water treatment plant. Again, choosing the same valves that were there and making sure that all the pipes fit and are connected together with the same company. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Does anyone have a question on any of those? We'll move to Streets Committee.
Yes, Mayor. Have an ordinance and a resolution. First being ordinance thirty-five of twenty twenty-five. It's an ordinance vacating and closing a portion of Hester Street, Hester Drive in the City of Benton and for other purposes. And also resolution number fifty of twenty twenty-five. It's a resolution expressing the willingness to utilize federal aid transportation program funds from the Surface Transportation Block Grant and Carbon Edging Reduction Program and for other purposes. And that's all we have.
Thanks, sir. Anyone have a question on either of these? Got a question? Okay, I don't hear any, so we're gonna close the agenda meeting. We'll start in four minutes as soon as Ms. Cindy gets up with the council meeting. Before we get started, may have your attention to the back of the room on the wall. You'll see some beautiful posters that they were brought to us by Ringo Elementary School. The last day of school, they'd gotten together and made those. We thought it'd be appropriate to show their artwork here. And I love some of it. Be Kind, You Can, just some motivational things that these elementary kids came up with, so. If you're wondering why out there, up there, that's the reason. The school right below us brought it to us. All right, I'm gonna call June Council Meeting order. We'll be led in invocation by Pastor Perry Black, and I want to go on record thanking him for his vision and the things that the Second Chance Ranch does for foster kids in our county. Last time I heard, they had about ninety-six out there, and they just provide these kids with love and compassion. And more importantly, they give them that next step so they can be successful in life. So thank you and your church for everything you do in that. Pastor. Please remove your hats and stand.
Just for the minutes, we just dropped off blueprints for one more foster home behind Tinseltown, so we start construction on that six-bedroom and go over a hundred foster children. And what a great community. We moved to this community forty years ago. And it's a lot of treetops, and now everywhere you look, there's rooftops. And so when Solomon recognized he had the responsibility of caring for God's people, he realized that was a daunting task. And I don't think I have to explain to you guys and you ladies, the expansion and growth, you gotta have something that Solomon recognized he needed. And God said, what do you want? And he said, I'd like to have wisdom and knowledge. And God gave that to him. And as a result, not only did he prosper, but it says silver and gold was like gravel. So I'd like to see this community grow and pick up some gravel. Until we get streets of gold. Father, we thank you so much for our city that literally puts you first place, and we ask you for wisdom. You said in your word, if any of us lack wisdom, and many of us do, that if we would ask you for it in faith, you'd give it to us. So Lord, I pray for our city council, our city leaders, our community leaders. We pray, Lord, that you'd pour out your spirit, lead, guide, and direct. Let us walk in the wisdom of God that far exceeds intellect, and we thank you for it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Nine present tonight. Thank you. You have the minutes before you for May nineteenth, regular meeting. Do I have a motion to accept?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We also had a public hearing on June the tenth concerning Hester Drive. Do we, you have the minutes before you. Do I hear a motion to accept those?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, we'll move right into committee reports and motions. We'll start with personnel and health. Councilmember Donner.
Mr. Mayor, I have ordinance number thirty of twenty twenty-five. I'd like to read and adopt, please.
All right, we have a motion and a second to read and adopt. Ordinance number thirty of twenty twenty-five, please.
Order, some of thirty of twenty twenty-five. An ordinance residing in the City of Benton shall become a participating public employer of the Arkansas Public Employees Retirement System and for other purposes, whereas it is important to have a well-qualified and trained employees to better serve citizens of our community, and whereas it is good public policy to encourage all qualified employees to prepare for their financial needs in the future. Now they're forbidden or named by City Council of City of Benton, Arkansas, Section One. The City of Benton shall take steps necessary to become a participating public employer of the Arkansas Public Employees Retirement System here in after APERS. Section two, the desired effective date of participation is July the twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five. All eligible employees, which include the mayor, city attorney, and city clerk of the city as defined by Arkansas law, shall become members of APERS and entitled to contribute pursuant to the rules of the APERS system. Section three, in accordance with city ordinance, any individual serving as mayor, city attorney, or city clerk are eligible to participate in a local retirement program governed by Arkansas Code annotated twenty-four twelve, one twenty, one twenty-one, and one twenty-three, which are not a part of the city's current defined benefit plan. In accordance with Arkansas Code annotated twenty-four four, three oh-three, any individual serving as the mayor, city attorney, or city clerk as of the passage of this ordinance shall have the choice to continue in with those local retirement programs specific to their elected positions. For any individual serving in those positions after this date, they must participate as members of APERS and contribute pursuant to the rules of the APERS system. Section four, the mayor and chief financial officer shall take all necessary steps to certify this ordinance in the minutes of the Personnel Health and Safety Committee meeting and City Council meeting to the APERS board.
We've had a lot of discussion, a lot of education on this one topic over the past year and a half, two years, three years, whatever it's been since we started the process. We have a lot of employees here tonight, so I'm just gonna say, if you're an employee of the City of Benton, would you and your four APERS please stand up at this time? Okay, thank you. If you're an employee of the City of Benton against it, please stand up. Okay, does anyone in the public would like to say anything at this time? Don? Come, come. Say your name. I think it's on.
Don White. I'm getting all of my information from the cooler. As I look at this bill in front of me, it's one of those things my dad used to say, son, if it ain't, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. I haven't heard one complaint from a city employee that is not satisfied with the retirement plan that they're under right now. Not one. And here's the problem, okay? I'm under Social Security. That's a fixed income. It's not a bearable income like APERS is. APERS is a bearable income. The bad thing about it is, is there's no guaranteed retirement fund under APERS. The investment risk is borne by the employee, not the employer. Now, I've heard of all these city employees, including the mayor, that says the greatest, the greatest resource this city has is its employees. And then all of a sudden, I look and you're wanting to take the guaranteed income from the city employees and make it a bearable income. It does not make any sense. Second of all, where are you gonna get the money? It's one hundred thousand dollars this year. Where is it coming from? Two hundred thousand dollars after that, next year, and all the other years to come. Please don't tell me you found a way to rob Peter and give the parlor. This is not the type of city that we want. I don't know where you're gonna get the money. This is generational debt that we're talking about. I don't want you going into my pocket and taking my money away from me any longer. So I don't know how this vote's gonna go, but as far as I'm concerned, this is not a good piece of legislation. Thank you.
All right, appreciate your opinion. All right, anyone else out there got anything you want to say? Council, any questions or comments from the council? Uh, please take a vote.
Bill Donner?
Yes.
Jeff Morrow?
Yes.
Judd Hart? Trevor Valance? Steve Lee? Jeff Hamm?
Yes.
Frank Baptist?
Yes.
Steve Brown?
Yes.
Ann Spencer Cole?
Yes.
Evelyn Reed?
Yes.
All right, ordinance number thirty twenty twenty-five has passed nine to one. Thank you all for being here, and I know some of you want to leave, so you may do so at this time, and we'll wait till you leave, and then we'll get started with the rest of it. I want to thank the council for voting yes for our employees. Thank the council for voting yes for our employees. All right, now we'll move on with the rest of the council meeting. And we'll go to the Animal Service Committee. Oh, I'm sorry. We'll go to the Animal Service Committee because Mr. Valance has to be somewhere at six o'clock.
Sir, yes, Mr. Mayor, we have a resolution forty-four of twenty twenty-five that I would like to read and adopt by title only.
All right, we have a motion and a second to read and adopt resolution number forty-four twenty twenty-five, please.
Resolution forty-four of twenty twenty-five, resolution authorizing the mayor of the City of Benton to apply for a grant on behalf of the Benton Animal Services and for the purposes.
This is an eighty-twenty grant. We're asking about four hundred and eighty thousand dollars and some change. We have the money that was privately donated to cover the twenty percent. So any comments or questions from the public? From the council? Here none, please take a vote.
Jeff Morrow? Judd Hart? Trevor Valance? Steve Lee? Jeff Hamm?
Yes.
Frank Baptist?
Yes.
Steve Brown? Ann Spencer Cole? Evelyn Reed?
Yes.
Bill Donner?
All right, resolution number forty-four twenty twenty-five has passed nine to one.
Thank you.
All right, anything else?
That's all.
Thank you. We'll move on down to Community Service. Council member Bree.
Yes, sir. At this time, make a motion to read and adopt resolution forty-five by title only.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to read and adopt resolution number forty-five, please.
Resolution forty-five of twenty twenty-five, a resolution defending the structure located sixteen hundred Gum Street and code enforcement raised said property in accordance with Arkansas State law and city ordinance and for the purposes.
Comments or questions from the public? From the council? Anyone here from sixteen hundred Gum Street? Like to speak? Here none, please take a vote.
Judd Hart? Trevor Valance? Steve Lee? Jeff Hamm?
Yes.
Frank Baptist?
Yes.
Steve Brown? Ann Spencer Cole?
Yes.
Evelyn Reed?
Yes.
Bill Donner? Jeff Morrow?
It passed eight to two. Council member Bree?
Yes, sir. Make a motion to read and adopt resolution forty-six by title only.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to read and adopt resolution number forty-six.
Resolution forty-six of twenty twenty-five, a resolution defending the structure located at twenty-three nineteen Kelso Circle and for code enforcement raised said property in accordance with Arkansas State law and city ordinance and for the purposes.
Is there anyone here from twenty-three nineteen Kelso Circle? I think no one, any comments from the public? Steve, do you have something? I thought you raised your hand. Okay. Anything from the council? Here none, please take a vote.
Trevor Valance? Steve Lee? Jeff Hamm?
Yes.
Frank Baptist?
Yes.
Steve Brown? Ann Spencer Cole?
Yes.
Evelyn Reed?
Yes.
Bill Donner? Jeff Morrow? Judd Hart?
Passes, now, resolution forty-six of twenty-five passes eight to two.
Make a motion to read and adopt resolution forty-seven by title only.
We have a motion and a second to read and adopt resolution forty-seven of twenty-five by title, please.
Resolution forty-seven of twenty twenty-five, a resolution defending the structure located at twenty-five oh-two Gatton Road and for code enforcement raised said property in accordance with Arkansas State law and city ordinance and for the purposes.
Is anyone here from twenty-five oh-two Gatton? Questions from the council? Please take a vote.
Steve Lee? Jeff Hamm?
Yes.
Frank Baptist?
Yes.
Steve Brown? Ann Spencer Cole?
Yes.
Evelyn Reed?
Yes.
Bill Donner? Jeff Morrow? Judd Hart? Trevor Valance?
Resolution forty-seven of twenty-five passes eight to two.
Motion for to read and adopt resolution forty-eight by the home circuit.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution forty-eight.
Resolution forty-eight of twenty twenty-five, a resolution to request the Celine County Tax Collector place a certified lien against real property located at one-twenty North Conrad Street as a result of incurred expenses by the City of Benton in accordance with state law and city ordinance and for the purposes.
Is anyone here from one-twenty North Conrad Street? Got any questions from the council?
Jeff Hamm?
Yes.
Frank Baptist?
Yes.
Steve Brown? Ann Spencer Cole? Evelyn Reed? Bill Donner? Jeff Morrow? Judd Hart? Trevor Valance? Steve Lee?
Resolution forty-eight of twenty-five passes eight to two.
No, sir.
Thank you. Move to the Finance Committee. Councilmember Brown?
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a motion that we read and adopt ordinance number thirty-one of twenty twenty-five.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to read and adopt ordinance number thirty-one.
Ordinance number thirty-one of twenty twenty-five, an ordinance levying a tax on all real and personal property in the City of Benton, Arkansas for the City General and for the Fireman's Pension and Relief Fund and for the purposes, whereas under the laws of the State of Arkansas, the City Council of any municipality may or honor or before the time fixed by law for levying county taxes, levy certain taxes on both the real and personal property assessed within the City of Benton. And whereas the amount of the levy shall be certified and placed and extended upon the tax books by the county clerk and shall be collected in the same manner that the state and county taxes are collected by the tax clerk, now they're forbidden or named by the City Council of City of Benton, Arkansas, Section One. The City Council hereby authorizing the levies, the following taxes on all the real and personal property that has been assessed within the City of Benton, Arkansas. One, city general purposes, two point eight mils on the dollar on real property and personal property. Two, Fireman's Pension and Relief Fund, one mil on the dollar on real and personal property.
Just for everyone's information, this is the same, and it's been for years we haven't changed it, but we have to vote on it to get it dug first. Any comments or questions? From the public? The council? Take a vote.
Frank Baptist?
Yes.
Steve Brown?
Yes.
Ann Spencer Cole?
Yes.
Evelyn Reed?
Yes.
Bill Donner? Jeff Morrow? Judd Hart?
Yes.
Trevor Valance? Steve Lee? Jeff Hamm?
Yes.
Thirty-one.
Uh, yes, sir. I'd like to make a motion that we read and adopt resolution number forty-nine of twenty twenty-five by title only.
Second.
Motion and a few seconds to read and adopt resolution forty-nine.
Resolution forty-nine of twenty twenty-five, a resolution authorizing the mayor and the City of Benton to utilize federal aid transportation alternative program funds and for the purposes.
This is a grant for about four hundred thousand dollars, eighty-twenty split. It's phase one for archery. Questions from the public? The council?
Steve Brown? Ann Spencer Cole?
Yes.
Evelyn Reed?
Yes.
Bill Donner? Jeff Morrow? Judd Hart?
Yes.
Trevor Valance? Steve Lee? Jeff Hamm?
Yes.
Frank Baptist?
Yes.
All right, resolution forty-nine of twenty-five passes eight to two. All right, we'll move to P and Z Commission.
Yes, sir. I have a motion to read and adopt ordinance number thirty-two of twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Motion and a second to read and adopt ordinance thirty-two.
Ordinance number thirty-two of twenty twenty-five, an ordinance residing in parcel number eight oh-five dash two oh-five two eight dash zero zero one in the City of Benton, Celine County, Arkansas, from H.I. Heavy Industrial to R-five multifamily district and for the purposes. Whereas an application residing was filed with the Planning and Commission of City of Benton, Arkansas, requesting that the property located at parcel number eight oh-five dash two oh-five two eight dash zero zero one in the city be rezoned from H.I. to R-five. And whereas the Planning and Commission ordered a public hearing to be held on June the third, twenty twenty-five, at six p.m. for the purpose of hearing said application, notice that hearings have been published and newspapers have been notified circulation in Celine County, Arkansas, but evidence having been submitted to all property owners or leases within three hundred feet of the property, having been notified of said hearing, that said hearing, the Planning and Commission recommended to the City Council of such requests be granted. And whereas the City Council of the City of Benton, Arkansas, desires to rezone the following property from H.I. to R-five, now they're forbidden or named by the City Council of City of Benton, Arkansas, Section One. The following property described is hereby rezoned from H.I. Heavy Industrial to R-five multifamily district. There is not an address. The parcel number is eight oh-five dash two oh-five two eight dash zero zero one. zero zero one.
It's, uh, in a R five allows maximum ordinance for parcel. Here's the cheat chart for all of you that asked questions about voting. Thought you might wanna have this in your possession, so for any other questions, any comments from the public? The council? Don, please take a vote.
Ann Spencer Cole.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Judd Hart.
Yes.
Trevor Valance. Steve Lee. Jeff Ham.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Steve Brown.
Yes.
Order thirty-two of twenty-five passes eight to two. Thinking council.
No, sir, that's it, sir.
Move to the D and Z Commission. Councilmember Hart.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to read and adopt ordinance thirty-three of twenty twenty-five, please.
Second.
Motion and a second to read and adopt ordinance thirty-three.
Ordinance number thirty-three of twenty twenty-five. An ordinance submitting the ordinance number forty of twenty twenty-three clarifying the assessment of stormwater fees and for other purposes. Whereas in two thousand and six, authorized by ordinance and state law, the city of Benton, Arkansas implemented a fee for commercial and residential utility users within the city and within pre-annexation areas to be used for funding the regulation and control of stormwater within the city. And whereas in two thousand and twenty-three, the city council revised the monthly fee to ten dollars per month for commercial utility users and five dollars per month for residential utility users. And whereas the city council has determined it is in the best interest of the city to clarify the circumstances in which utility users are to be charged the appropriate monthly fee. Now, therefore beed ordained by the city council of Benton, Arkansas. Section One, ordinance number forty of twenty twenty-three is to be amended as follows. Section Two, the amounts provided in ordinance number seventy-six of two thousand and nine as originally levied by ordinance number sixty-four, two thousand and six are hereby amended to ten dollars and no cents for commercial utility users that are located within the city limits of the city, and five dollars and no cents for residential utility users who, whose residence is located within the city limits of the city. Any person aged sixty-five or older who is on Social Security disability, if under age sixty-five, shall be charged two dollars and no cents per month. Any person meeting these criteria shall complete the necessary request form with the utility department for the reduced rate. This rate shall become effective on the first day of the following month, uh, wait, first day of the month following the effective date of this ordinance. And then the part that's being taken out is, it's lined through, and it says, "The charge shall be limited to one charge per physical address levied appropriately by the utility department." And that's been marked through. The charge shall be limited to one charge per utility account. However, sprinkler-only accounts shall not be charged. Section Two, all other provisions in order number forty of twenty twenty-three not in conflict with this ordinance shall remain in effect. Section Three, this ordinance shall go into effect on September the first, twenty twenty-five. Section Four, should any word, phrase, or section of this ordinance to be, be held to be invalid or unconstitutional by court of competent jurisdictions, invalidity should not affect the force and validity of the remaining portion of, of sections of this ordinance.
Comments or questions from the public? From the council? Please take a vote.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Judd Hart.
Yes.
Trevor Valance. Steve Lee. Jeff Ham.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Steve Brown.
Yes.
All right, ordinance number thirty-three of twenty-five passes eight to two. Councilmember Hart.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to read and adopt, uh, ordinance thirty-four of twenty twenty-five, please.
Motion and a second to read and adopt ordinance thirty-four.
Order number thirty-four of twenty twenty-five. An ordinance waiving bidding and authorizing Benton Utilities to purchase replacement control valves with installation for the water treatment plant with installation and for the purposes. Whereas Benton Utilities has immediate need to purchase replacement control valves with installation at the water treatment plant. And whereas because Prestige Worldwide Technologies is sole source supplier of the purchase of these control valves and installation is necessary, for Benton Utilities to purchase said equipment and services without competitive bidding in connection therewith. And whereas the city council wishes to authorize and approve the transaction described below. Now, therefore beed ordained by the city council of Benton, Arkansas, Section One. It is in the best interest of the city for Benton Utilities to purchase the replacement control valves with installation from Prestige Worldwide Technologies posted off the box, seventeen thirty-eight, Mount Pleasant, Texas, seven five four five six. All actions of Benton Utilities pursuant to purchase authorized herein prior to the formal adoption of this ordinance is hereby confirmed, ratified, and approved. Section Two, the requirement of limited bidding for these purchases hereby authorized is deemed not feasible or practical and therefore is waived.
Comments or questions from the public? From the council? Don, please take a vote.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Judd Hart.
Yes.
Trevor Valance. Steve Lee. Jeff Ham.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Steve Brown.
Yes.
Ann Spencer Cole.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Order thirty-four of twenty-five passes eight to two.
That's all I have, Mayor.
All right, thank you. We'll move to the Streets Committee.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance number thirty-five of twenty twenty-five by title only.
We have a motion to read and adopt, uh, ordinance number thirty-five of twenty twenty-five by title only, so we'll have to vote on doing that part.
Yeah. Read by title only. Uh, Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Judd Hart. Trevor Valance. Steve Lee. Jeff Ham.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Steve Brown.
Yes.
Ann Spencer Cole.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Eighteen.
All right, it's passed to read by title only, so please read ordinance number thirty-five of twenty twenty-five by titles.
Order number thirty-five of twenty twenty-five. An ordinance vacating and closing a portion of Hester Drive in the city of Benton and for the purposes.
All right, anyone here in the public like to speak for or against this Hester Drive? I know we had a public hearing on June the tenth, but give that opportunity to anybody. Questions from the council? Don, please take a vote.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Judd Hart.
Yes.
Trevor Valance. Steve Lee. Jeff Ham.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Steve Brown.
Yes.
Ann Spencer Cole.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Bill Donner.
Order thirty-five of twenty-five passes eight to two. Ham.
Okay. Sorry, can't hear. Uh, next, I've got resolution number fifty of twenty twenty-five. I'll make a motion that, uh, we read or adopt it by title only.
We have a motion and a second to read and adopt Resolution Number fifty of twenty-five, please.
Resolution fifty of twenty twenty-five. Resolution expressing the willingness to utilize federal aid transportation program funds from the surface transportation block grant and carbon reduction program and for the purposes.
This is an eighty-twenty grant. It's for the engineering only of the widening of North Shore. Get the engineering on. Questions from the public? Questions from the council? Take a vote.
Judd Hart.
Yes.
Trevor Valance. Steve Lee. Jeff Ham.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Steve Brown.